And staff has confirmed that the petitioners have agreed upon this, and they are actually in favor of that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Vandenberg. At this point in time, once again, any questions from the board? Anybody from staff or public care to comment?
I just want to point out the obvious. Right now, however many seconds you just spent talking about this nice woman's fence is more than you ever spent talking about Buckeye or any of this stuff before it sailed through that Planning Department and Planning Commission. So just noting the irony there, you've had two meetings about this nice woman's fence, but why did you let Thomas Melody, you're telling Amy Connolly she can sign off on papers she's not supposed to sign off on back in last June? So, just the irony of this, I wanted to note.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Item eight on roll call for ordinance 006. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nine. Trustee Grady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the board to consider first reading ordinance number 20160-009, adopting the first addendum to MABUS master agreement.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. For several years, the village has been part of the MABUS aid box alarm system, intergovernmental agreement. MABUS is an emergency agreement between public safety entities, agencies to provide for mutual aid between departments when needed. Historically, mutual aid services have been provided without compensation between departments. MABUS has requested a change that would allow for compensation back to responding departments during instances of extended assistance more than eight consecutive hours. Under the proposed addendum, the responding assisting agency may request reimbursement for their services provided to another department during the extended assistance, but it's not required. The proposed addendum outlines the parameters and recommended rates that MABUS agencies may charge for services. The proposed addendum also indicates that invoices for services should be issued within 30 days of the date of service. As has always been the case, the village also will retain its right to terminate participation in MABUS with 90 days' notice.
Thank you. This item is for first reading. Any questions from the board? Seeing as none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 10. Trustee Yonker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like the board to consider rejecting the bids for the variable frequency drives at post one.
There's a motion to, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
In performing the necessary due diligence, it was discovered that both submittals contained deficiencies that were deemed by the village to declare both bidders to be categorized as non-responsive or responsible specific to the bid specifications. In addition, both bids exceed the village's budgeted amount for this project. Staff will be seeking alternative solutions to make necessary repairs to the variable frequency drives. This item was discussed February 16, 2016, at the Public Works Committee and recommended for approval. To reject.
All in favor of rejection signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 11. Trustee Yonker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like the board to consider approving a contract with the Tinley Park Convention Center for use of the facility to host the annual Discover Tinley Community Expo on Saturday, April 2nd.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian.
The Community Resource Commission has been hosting Discover Tinley Community Expo since 1977. The community expo has been drawing 3,000 to 5,000 people to the convention center annually and provides an opportunity for 160-plus participating businesses, services, and fraternal organizations to showcase their offerings to current and prospective Tinley Park residents. The contract amount is $15,000 for the rental of the convention center, which reflects a discount from the normal rate, plus $1,573 in additional estimated charges for food and gratuities. These costs were included in the fiscal year 2016 budget. I'd like the board to consider not to exceed $16,573 for the expo.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Item 11, contract for Tinley Park Convention Center for use of, for the use of the Tinley Park Convention Center by the Discover Tinley Expo. Roll call. Maher, Trustee Maher.
Yes.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 12. Trustee Brady.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like the board to consider ordinance number 20160-008, amending Chapter 31 at Title III of the Tinley Park Municipal Code, Internal Auditor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michael. Carry on.
The proposed ordinance would amend Chapter 31 of the Tinley Park Municipal Code for the purpose of creating the Office of Internal Auditor in the Village of Tinley Park. The duties of the internal auditor shall be to report directly to the village's budget, audit, and administrative committee. The internal auditor shall also perform work duties as assigned to him or her by the Budget, Audit, and Administrative Committee. Examples of potential duties of the internal auditor include, but are not limited to, the following: review, assess, and identify improvements and processes related to monies due the village; review, assess, and identify improvements and processes related to expenditures; perform payroll audits. This item was discussed at the February 16, 2016 Budget Audit and Administrative Committee and recommended for approval. Consider ordinance number 20160-008, amending Chapter 31 at Title II of the, is that Title II or III?
Two.
Title III of the Tinley Park Municipal Code, Internal Auditor.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? All in favor signify by saying aye. This is for first reading.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 13. Trustee Brady.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, is there an opportunity for comment on this? I realize it's first reading, but before the next meeting and it gets voted on, is there an opportunity for comment?
Actually, there's a public comment. You can comment at that point shortly, okay? Thank you, Ken. Item number 13.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like the board to consider resolution number 2016R-008, approving the placement of Army asset equipment on publicly-owned land.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
The VFW is preparing application to the U.S. Army Donations Program to receive a piece of surplus military equipment for the benefit of the Veterans Commission, the VFW, American Legion, and all veterans of Tinley Park. The application requires approval to place the equipment on public property. This resolution authorizes the Army asset equipment to be placed on publicly-owned land in the Village of Tinley Park and commits the village to paying a cost not to exceed $10,000 for the demilitarization and transportation of the equipment. The exact location for display will be determined once the piece of equipment is known. It is expected to be, that it will be placed somewhere along Veterans Parkway depending on the type of equipment that's received. The address that is used in the ordinance only designates the vicinity of the equipment. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Anybody from the board have any questions or comments? Anybody from staff? Anybody in the public here to comment? Seeing as there are none?
No.
You're right. We don't.
No.
Well, they said not to exceed $10,000. Mr. Clerk.
I can't hear you, sir.
Then we won't do it.
We won't do it.
I still can't hear you, sir.
We won't have a budget. If it's not to exceed, it won't get done.
When will you know that?
When the military identifies the type of equipment that it will be, which we don't know right now.
[laughing]
Mr. Clerk.
Item 13, resolution 008, and in the spirit of the last comment, roll call. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 14. Trustee Brady.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like the board to consider adopting ordinance number 2016O-007, amending Section 50.025 of Chapter 50 of Title V of the Tinley Park Municipal Code, Water Bills.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Carry on.
At least as early as 1977, the village had allowed 15 days for payment of the quarterly utility bills before 10% late charge would be assessed against the outstanding balance due. The due date was subsequently extended for 20 days. The survey was recently conducted on behalf of the Budget Audit and Administrative Committee that indicates that the 10% late charge appears to be the most common rate used in municipal water utilities throughout Illinois. Upon review at its meeting held on January 26, 2016, the Budget Audit and Admin Committee expressed a desire to extend the time the customers could pay their utility bills without late fee as well as to reduce the rate of the late fee charged. This ordinance affects the changes authorized by the committee to extend the due date for the utility bills from 20 to 25 days and to reduce the rate of the late charge from 10% to 5%. Additionally, the application of the late charge is changed to be calculated against the current billing charges and not against any prior balances that may still be outstanding. Tinley Park utility customers also have the ability to create their own budget billing by making the quarterly, by making prepayments against their accounts at any time. These payments will reduce the balance owed when the quarterly bill is issued. Customers can also access their account online to view consumption history, make a one-time payment, or to set up automatic bill payments with their preferred bank account or credit card. From the village website, click on Residence and scroll to Utility Bill Pay Options for more information. Following the adoption of this ordinance, these changes will become applicable to the utility bills dated April 1, 2016 and thereafter. This ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Anybody on the board care to comment? This item is up for adoption. Anybody in the public care to comment? I'd like to personally thank Trustee Brady for taking a look at this item. This has been one that seems to affect people somewhat disproportionately, so thank you, Bernie, for looking into that. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item 14, ordinance 007. On roll call, Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 15, inaugural Village of Tinley Park Town Hall Meeting. I'm going to let the clerk start with this one because he can probably give a little bit of background as to why we're here tonight in this location as opposed to our village hall, as well as some background in terms of the history of town halls in Tinley Park.
First, the comments, the first part of my comments should have been made at the opening of the meeting, and we failed to do that, and so I'll do it now. Why are we in this room? The fact is, is that at the last village board meeting, I raised the fact that I would be looking at schools and other locations in the town that would meet the requirements of the numbers of people attending the board meeting. By the state statute, the Open Meetings Act, the village has to provide adequate room for our people to come to the meetings. By village policy, and one step farther, and as quoted extensively in the newspapers in the last few days, we believe it's important to also make sure that you can drive to that location and park reasonably. So because of that, when we looked at schools, and all the school districts in the town over the last two weeks have been very supportive, we looked at schools, we basically could only look at high schools with possibly one junior high exception, which is Central Junior High. Why? The students going to junior highs go by bus. The ones that go to high school, more and more, go by car. So the high schools do have big enough parking lots to accommodate both the number of people that are in this room and cars in large numbers. Tonight, there was not a high school or junior high open for us, so we had to use this room. It's obviously meeting the requirement. I want to say, thank Dr. Mike Fitzgerald and others who reached out to make sure that we communicated where this was going to be, that, and all the details that go with it, so that all of you not only knew to come, but knew where you could park. We made sure the doors were open, and those other items that are important, so that you can get here again. There's a negative here, and the negative here is that, not at full rate, but very close to full rate, we have to pay for this facility, and that is a $2,000 charge.
[inaudible]
Pardon?
[inaudible]
No, no. Well, wait a second. Before I, no, 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 please let me finish. I did the financing on this and others across this state. This was built entirely from a tax increment financing district, so did the property taxes that you and I pay, pay for it? No. But did another tax, yes. So before somebody tries to say, no, they didn't, yes, taxes did. But not the taxes that are on your homes, or not the taxes that are in your sales, except that applies to this particular TIF district. The reality is that indeed, this is a municipal-supported facility, and I am more than happy, not tonight because of time, but feel free to come by and visit or call me, and I'll explain why this structure is set up the way it is so that the village of Tinley, so the village of Tinley Park and its taxpayers are not liable for this building. Okay, having said that, there is a $2,000 charge, and yes, it is a municipal-supported, and I'm not trying to say there's mirrors here, and I realize somebody might think that, but I'm happy to describe it and take all questions on how the financing was arranged, and it's worked perfectly so far. One of the two or three in the state that have worked, most don't. Having said that, we hear, these kinds of numbers might indicate that we're going to have to use this facility again. I can tell you that we hope to be using the high schools. Right now, there's great basketball games, there's a number of events. In fact, in Andrew High School, it's the theater that is taking the use of their facilities. So there's first. So, as we continue to hear, as we continue to hear from Dr. Fitzgerald, as we continue to hear from others in this room that call me at home, call me at work, say, boy, you better be ready for this, we're going to respond to what you've said. We've listened, and we will have a place and a location. I can tell you that the, we had over a dozen people from the Convention Center and about eight from the village staff, most of the afternoon, making sure that what's here would work. First time we've done this. This is not our long-run solution, and the mayor and the board know that, and over the course of the last few days, I've talked to most of the trustees separately that have called, and certainly the mayor, to let him know. This is a clerk's function. It's the meeting. We don't have many functions. When asked to do things, we do it. But this is ours, and the Open Meetings Act definitely, and I should tell you, and all the trustees know this, and the mayor knows it, the Attorney General of the State of Illinois cautioned us a week ago, well, this past, a week ago Monday, not yesterday, but a week ago Monday, that we must have facilities to support the size of the groups that may be attending. So without question, a sincere thank you to those of you sitting out here that have been keeping us informed, and I've been responding back in that, and that's, that's the way Tinley Park should work, and it is working, and congratulations to all of you for that. Now the town hall. The town hall in this village goes back to the first 10 years of the foundation of the village. I'm not going to cover every year. I lived most of them, but I'm not going to cover every year. But then the village made a mistake, and I'm going to share that with you, because we started town halls with the right idea, but with a little bit of a hiccup. The only place that was big enough to hold the village board meetings at that time were the taverns in Tinley Park. So the tavern keepers welcomed, and the village board said, thank you. The village board promptly passed an increase in the liquor tax, and the tavern keepers threw us out. We rescinded that tax, and we've been working well ever since. Now, Tinley Park has been an outstanding community, first a fine farm community from the middle part of the last, of the century before last. After World War II, and many of you in here, your parents, and in my case, mine and myself, after World War II, a suburban sprawl began. Tinley Park moved from 1940 till 1965 from a small farm town with hitching posts still on Oak Park Avenue to a community that was beginning to develop as part of the urban development of the United States. A new village board came in, sometimes spirited by some of the things being stated here, by the way. So, and I remember that group very well. I was coming back from an interesting war and listened attentively to what the folks were saying. Young trustees came in. Mayor Dunn was the mayor, listened to what many of us had to say, and we started having meetings to find out how better to go about this. We did not have a village treasure, we did not have a village income tax, a sales tax. We had none of those things. We funded ourselves only by property tax and something called TANs, Tax Anticipation Notes. But that's when youngsters and some oldsters made a decision that this was going to be a town of wonderful, middle-class Americans. I won't go through all the projects, I'll just say these. One, we agreed to loop the water system, almost bankrupted us. Why do that? So that no town in this, no house in this town or business could burn down because it was at the wrong end of the fire system. Shortly thereafter, we made another concrete decision with regard to streets and roads, saying that our streets and roads were our first priority. Why? So that it would allow us to have commerce throughout the village and allow our residents to move throughout the village. These were big then, today they're taken for granted. The next major step, and we're within two to complete this part, was when we said that the town would take no, and this is going to cause excited comments, would take no decision where we did construction of government property, a new building, a road, a park, that didn't contribute to the appreciation of the home value and the businesses of Tinley Park.
[inaudible]
Okay, that's why I said it would create some discussion. Now, no, now, understand what I said. I'm not going to weasel out of this easily. We took the position that the village would make no improvements of its own, any public improvements, so that every building that was built, every street that was built, whether it be the village hall, fire stations 1 through 4, would not contribute to the appreciation of the town, railroad stations 1 and 2. Every one of those set a next-high standard so that your investment in your home would be as safe as we could make it and appreciate it. Now, that has been, and still is, every one of these trustees' standard. There is no question that there's argument along the way, that some things that can be done might not do that, but from the point of view of the town's philosophy on spending its money, its money has been in that corner. To do these things, we've had a series of town halls, using basically the high schools. We didn't have this. Using basically the high schools to actually list things, not we tell you, you tell us. And the mayor wanted me to begin this discussion, because when we got this room, he said, okay, Pat, if you really think we're going to have that many people, man, look, your leadership was right, you did have that many people, then we should probably have our first town hall meeting just to outline, as the mayor will and his trustees, where he wanted to go from here. So I've done my time, and just in case you wondered, no, no you didn't, we haven't televised these meetings as long as I've been on the board, because my colleagues were afraid that, given me, given a camera, I would be uncontrollable. I'll turn this back to the mayor.
Thank you, Patrick, for that, for that history. Obviously, we've got a great forum. We've got great numbers here to have this kind of conversation, but one of the things that you may not recognize or realize is the way that the board kind of works internally. You know, you've heard kind of the stuff about board committees and all this stuff. When you take a look at the agendas, you'll see that various trustees are carrying certain items on the agenda. That's because that's the area that they have an oversight of. They're not a replacement for staff, but it's kind of oversight. So once again, when I spoke earlier about keeping staff and the board close to each other and not letting one get too far ahead of the other, that's what the purpose is supposed to be. And so to my left, far left, you've got trustee TJ Grady that chairs Public Safety. It's Fire, Police, and Emergency Services. You've got trustee Maher who chairs Finance and Economic Development. So in economic development, such as, for instance, this project went in, it was a finance committee chair, and trustee Ray was, then trustee Ray was that liaison. Next to him is trustee Mike Penito, who has Building and Compliance.
Appointed to it in late August, just in case anybody's wondering. Didn't ask for it. Still haven't really figured out what they're doing, and I'm having a hell of a time getting information about what's going on there.
Well, he'll get a lot more information. Not to, not to let you think that that short tenure has, I think, changed things. It has, and as I mentioned earlier, we've got a number of properties that have been abandoned where court action is being taken to eliminate them and to get rid of them. I think we're all sick and tired of the Clark Station on Oak Park Avenue. We're all sick and tired of the old Freedom Clinic at 171st in Harlem, and there are probably about four or five other properties that are in the process of court order and bank ownership and all sorts of other nonsense that we have to go through before we can get action. And let me tell you what happens with that action. Once we get that authority and the approval to take those down, we get the pleasure, of course, of paying for it. Now, we lien the property, so we eventually recapture it back, but that's one of the challenges that that type of aggressive action brings, and I think most of everyone here will agree that it's warranted and we need to get rid of it. The clerk, as you know, seen already, has, and mentioned that he is responsible for the ministerial duties. He's kind of our historian, collector of records, and maintains the seal of the village of Tinley Park, actually. To my far right, trustee Yonker, he chairs Public Works. So when you look out your window and you see the streets plowed and salted, or on the other side, say they've plowed too quickly because now they're all sloshed back on my sidewalks and everything that I just shoveled, that's that area. But our Public Works people have had some challenges, and clearly, we've talked about water meters already this evening in committee, and we've talked about, I think, some of the challenges with snow plowing. We're working on it. It's a work in progress, but I've got to tell you that I think our streets are some of the best streets that we've got, not only from snow removal, but also from the maintenance side as well. And that's, that body's work. Trustee Vandenberg gets the planning area, an area that's been very active of late as well.
Regrettably.
Well, hopefully it'll get more active, because as we see some positive things happening in downtown Tinley, that's going to be the fun stuff. But as part of that, and this is going to be the area that trustee- But as part of that, and this is going to be the area that trustee Vandenberg spends some time on, as that short-term group of volunteer, the ad hoc committee, has been identified and will be working with subject matter experts to take a good look at that zoning code as well as the legacy code. I do share the comment and the concern that was raised earlier, that a fence variance seems to get more comment and discussion than, than a building development, so we will work on that one, and it will be the input of that group of citizens that will help identify those further. To trustee Vandenberg's left is trustee Bernie Brady. He's Chair of Budget Administration and Audit. He's the one that's going to be taking on some of the things you just heard tonight, the approval for first reading of an internal audit position. This will give us more opportunities, I think, to look more closely at what we do. I think it will also be able to provide the entire board kind of a second set of eyes on the finances. And it's not that anybody's necessarily doing anything wrong, but for instance, are we collecting rebillables and everything on a timely basis? Is somebody taking a second look at that check register that goes out every time we sit here and approve the payment of bills? There's also some other interesting things that Bernie's got hot on his plate right now, and that's working with the clerk's office to refine the ethics ordinance, which is, needs some dusting off. Needs to be clarified, I think that ordinance was passed originally back in 1999, if I'm not mistaken, and I was the sponsor of that ordinance, but it's time to get it up to date, it's time to get it cleaned up, it's time to get those things that people didn't understand clarified so that we don't go through some silliness that we've gone through lately. So that's your board, and that's their board assignments and kind of how it all fits into the things that you see in your agendas. What I'd like to do, and we've got staff, you see the boards on both sides, really trying to get some input from you all. This, this is a critical time for the village, we're going through budgets. Our fiscal year, if you didn't know, it isn't calendar year like most of yours or your household, at least in terms of when you pay taxes, it actually starts May 1st. So it's a, it's a quirky fiscal year start, but it's, it basically means that this is the time to do business, the business of budget occurs right now, and once again, Bernie's group will be very busy as we get through this because each of the committees is involved in some way, shape or form in reviewing budget. And as, for those of you that, you know, are accounting types or have accounting interests, you know that budget basically tells you what you do, that's your work plan, that's what you're going to do the next year. And I think, and take it very seriously, that this is the time of year to get input from you all in terms of what priorities we think we have and what priorities you think we have, because they're not always the same, and when they get too far out of whack, that's when we've got problems, and that's what we're trying to address in part this evening by hearing you and getting your input. Couple of things that I think are high on this board's priority list. Obviously, we've got to get an ethics ordinance cleaned up and done quickly, and that's basically because this board has to disclose, your volunteers have to disclose their interest at or about May 1st. And we need to get this cleaned up, so the forms that they complete are not gotchas, but basically are true disclosures, and we need to get that straight, and we need to get that done ASAP. Some of the other projects, and let me talk about some of the fun projects, because I think, you know, we, we kind of dwell on our challenges. Obviously, you heard tonight in committee, the water meter replacement program is, is well underway and we'll be taking bids on that, and hopefully that'll close a way-too-long chapter on a frustration that I think has bothered all of us. The other piece that I think is exciting, and this is where trustee Vandenberg's committee will become very engaged, as well as the Plan Commission, is going to be, obviously, the development of downtown. We've finally seen some life, we've actually got an offer on our table to pay for the property at Central June, the old Central Junior High Site, and the proposal, which is still early on, so, you know, it's, it's not soup, I can't tell you that we've got a deal or anything else, but not only do they want to pay market price for the property, but they are proposing 40 townhomes to be for sale on that parcel at prices somewhere between, well, it's about $300,000 a townhome. So I think it'd be a great opportunity to actually see some development go on there and some good development. So we're also working on North Street to try to co-join some of those properties. As you know, there's been some homes that have been on there that have been torn down. The village isn't necessarily interested in purchasing each and every piece of property there, but we're interested in getting it developed, and sometimes that's what you have to do to make that happen. So we're working with the owners there to try to make that work. So at this point, I'd really like to open it up. I want, not unlike we've done in other open sessions, but basically, I'd kind of like to know from you all, what do you love about this village? What are the top five things that you love about this village? And give me the top five things that you really don't care for about this village, and let's, let's get it. You've got your scribes up there. Bill, do you want to take the, you take the pluses and Steve gets to take the minuses. You're up.
Mr. Mayor, the first thing I think should be on this list is, you need to have a serious conversation about the basic competence of the attorneys that you pay. Starting with Thomas Melody, who's making about $200 an hour to sit here during these board meetings from the firm Kleintorpe Jenkins. That law firm has gotten in trouble all over this area in the Southland by giving bad legal advice to public bodies that then the public bodies violate the Open Meetings Act, the Freedom of Information Act. You have acknowledged that the Attorney General had to caution you about the problems with the Open Meetings Act that you have had recently. At every one of these meetings, Thomas Melody has been there. Why hasn't that man told you that you were going to be in violation of the Open Meetings Act? The one that really irks me that you didn't acknowledge, on February 4th, Art Pierce, who I don't see in the room, but he presided over that Planning Commission meeting, the public came to ask questions at that meeting of Amy Connolly, and it turned out that that was the last meeting that she would be speaking. She was actually asked, answering some questions that night before she lawyered up and clammed up. Art Pierce stopped people from speaking, he told them that they were not allowed to address questions to her, and that is a violation of the Open Meetings Act that Thomas Melody was well aware of. He should have stopped Art Pierce, he should have allowed people to speak to Amy Connolly to ask questions of her, because under our Open Meetings Act, you are not allowed as a government body to restrict someone's speech and say who they cannot or can address during a meeting. These are basic competence issues, when Thomas Melody was standing right, or sitting right there, he should have stopped that. The other concern that I have is in emails that have been produced already under the Freedom of Information Act, back in June of 2015, I believe, June 24th and June 25th of 2015. The Buckeye Hope Foundation was putting pressure on Amy Connolly to sign some document that was needed for the HUD credits, the tax credits, the IHDA, whatever that is. And they were actually saying to her in these emails, "Oh, Amy, we'll just fill out all the paperwork for you, you just have to sign it, you have to fill it out." Amy actually, in these emails, had a question about whether she was able to do that. She states in emails that she went to the attorney and asked him if she was allowed to sign those documents. And Thomas Melody from Kleintorpe Jenkins, if I'm incorrect, correct me now, I believe you were the attorney that gave her advice on that.
You're incorrect.
Well then, who from Kleintorpe Jenkins gave her that advice that she was allowed to sign those papers? Because here's what happened. In the email Amy sent back to Buckeye, she states, "I spoke with the attorney today," I believe this was on June 25th of 2015, "she states, 'I spoke with the attorney, and the attorney said I can sign it, but I have to put a qualifying statement under my signature.'" Who in their right mind would sign a document if they have to then put a qualifying statement saying, "I'm not authorized to sign the document"? What attorney gave her that advice? If that is from Kleintorpe Jenkins, I think that is evidence enough for you as a board to have a serious conversation about the basic competence of your legal representation, especially when he is sitting at meetings and Open Meetings Act and other violations happen? What the heck is going on? That man should not be allowed to be billing for legal advice he is giving you that causes you to violate the Open Meetings Act. That is just unacceptable, sir. You should apologize to the village, Thomas Melody, for not stepping in, not stopping those violations, and whoever was giving Amy advice that she is allowed to sign documents that she's not authorized to sign, and saying that, "Oh, she can just write an explanation under her signature," that is the most absurd thing I've ever heard. So it concerns me, and I'm wrapping up my point, it concerns me that Thomas Melody has his fingers on the process of picking this law firm to be advised. Well, if Kleintorpe Jenkins is involved in these shenanigans involving Amy and Buckeye, how are you able to then give advice on what firm should be looking into this? That concerns me, sir.
Thank you. Once again, you know, and I, please understand that the subjects of this investigation are just that, and I'd like to, I am trying to get input from a town hall for budget perspective, and, you know... I am, I'm trying to, that's why I've got a line here.
Excuse me, town, am I allowed to step down and go to the bathroom?
Real quick, for earlier, Mr. Grady mentioned about how much Winston and Strawn charged. He wasn't aware of it, I just want to let yous know. He, they charged $802,421, and then Tuesday, the county board is voting to bill them another $216,683. So they're on the hook for 1.1 million right now, just so everyone's aware of that, for that lawsuit, 1.1, not 100,000 or 200,000.
Thank you.
The five things I love about Tinley Park? No, listen, the first thing I think I would like to try and understand is, you were mentioning kind of where we're at in, in the cycle. When do appointed employees get their evaluation in the current rhythm? So when, when do, who are, in, in terms of the people that are actually paid employees today of the city, and I'll say specifically, economic development, planning, when do they actually come up for appointment?
May 1st.
Okay, and so what's the process to determine if they're effective and should still be in those posts, and who, who weighs in on that?
If they're evaluate, there's an evaluation process that's in place. The, the village manager is engaged in that process, as are the supervisors of those individuals that you mentioned.
Right. So I, I think part of that process should be the fact that several thousand people came out to basically let you know that economic development is not constituted by vapor shops, a pawn shop, a rent-a-center, and a various other scattered asinine businesses in our town.
How many of those do we have?
That is not a formulated strategy that the city's using to grow, okay? That's as happenstance. Secondly, if, if anything has been, if this has been for anything, all of us showing up here, we want to make sure that those appointed employees and the appointments actually are public, and that all of us get to see exactly who's going to continue on this, on as an employee of the city.
You absolutely will.
Hi, my name's Carol Ernest, and this is the fourth meeting I have attended, and to be very frank, I'm extremely tired of all the "I don't knows, I don't remember, I'll try," and, and basically all of the lies that are being told to us by the village. We shouldn't have to monitor you to make sure that you are doing your job, but we are, and we will, and we aren't going anywhere anytime soon. Even though we're not on your payroll, we are taxpayers and voters, and we do have a say as to what is happening in our village. And I'm going to say, like I said at the very first meeting, our trust is broken, and it doesn't seem to me that the majority of you care anything about it or you're trying to do anything to repair it. And you all need to be reminded that when you accepted these positions, you accepted the responsibilities and accountabilities that come with it. You also promised to do what is in the best interest of every citizen in Tinley. You have miserably failed. Today, for example, I read about an upscale movie theater coming to Frankfurt. Their village officials did things the right way, the way they're supposed to be done. Their Planning Commission recommended it to the board for a vote, but before they even did that, they held a public meeting for the residents to hear their thoughts on it and answer any questions and concerns they had. That's called total transparency. Then they brought it to the board for a vote. In Tinley Park, our planning department deceptively changed zoning codes and lied to our faces, going question by members of this audience. One example is when Mr. Niemeyer was asked if the soil samples were conducted. He said no twice at the first meeting. Then, then the third meeting, he didn't remember, he couldn't recall. We have the email from you stating the soil samples were done last year. You lied.
Okay.
Also, seven out of the nine members of our Plan Commission resigned because they too were blindsided by this project. They had no knowledge of it prior to the end of January. They specifically asked at the end of their meetings, were there any new projects that were going to be going on for Tinley? Never was there any mention of the reserve. They found out about it at the end of January, like we all did. Once again, I ask if this project was going to be so great for Tinley and benefit all of us so much, why did no one hear about it? Also, why would our board give their power to a planning department involving something of this great magnitude? I mean, we're not talking about putting up a lemonade stand on 183rd and Oak Park Avenue. Another example of good government, we saw a video of the Oaklawn Village Board Meeting that was held at the end of February. I don't know if any of you saw it, but you should go home and, and watch it tonight. Yeah, Google it. Buckeye approached Oaklawn in the fall of 2015. It never went past the discussion phase. They simply told them no, like you should have. Oaklawn wants only market-driven housing. What does Tinley Park want again? Oaklawn has safeguards in place, so things like what we're dealing with here today would never happen. So Buckeye came to us. Watching that video showed us how real professionals act who care about their community and who do what's in the best interest of their residents. Just so you know, the Buck stops here. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Nancy O'Connor. I actually just have some questions concerning the Plan Commission. First of all, no building permits can be issued without a Plan Commission fully seated to approve the project prior, is that correct?
Right now, you do not have a Plan Commission in place.
Correct. So no permit can be...
No site plan approvals.
Okay.
You can still do building permits and that sort of thing, but you can't do site plans, so right now, nothing can happen.
Okay, very good. And the process for applying to the Plan Commission, since there are now seven open seats, is there an application on the Tinley Park website for that?
I've been accepting CVs from a number of people, a number of people in this audience have, have given them to me, and I've shared them with the rest of my board.
Okay, and there's no application, however, on the Tinley Park website for this?
No, it's just send me a resume.
Just send a resume? Okay.
You've got my website address.
Is there any deadline that the resumes have to be sent to you by?
Well, sooner than later, because I'd like this board to consider the recommendations pretty quickly, and the more, the more, the better.
Okay, and, and, so it's the entire board that would conduct an interview of each applicant, is that correct?
No, no. What hap-
What happens is that usually the resumes or the CVs will be reviewed by each of my colleagues on the board. I will nominate somebody and they will vote it.
Okay, so it is by vote, though, by the remainder of the board?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So if anyone in this audience cares to send a resume to you?
Yes, absolutely.
And each application or resume will be given equal consideration?
Certainly.
Is that correct? So whether it's seven applicants, or 700, or 7,000, each one will be given equal consideration, correct?
Well, that would be my attempt, yes.
Do I have your guarantee? Do we have your guarantee that if you receive 7,000 resumes, that each and every resume will be given equal consideration?
If you can get them in to me by the end of this month, sure.
So is the deadline March 31st?
I want to go with this, I want this board to appoint and ratify my nominees by the first meeting in April. Yes.
And Mr. Mayor, why are you in such a hurry?
Well, because if you want development to stop in this village completely...
Mr. Mayor, I would like development to stop long enough to stop Buckeye.
Didn't I just tell you? You must have fallen asleep.
That's all.
No, that is not true.
I would like it long enough to stop Buckeye, plain and simple.
I understand that. I do.
Sure, I don't, and maybe you do.
Yes, I do.
But if you've looked at any of the past history of how Buckeye operates, I can guarantee you, Google it, it's, I found it in an hour and a half, case after case, even Cuyahoga Falls that went to the Supreme Court. The problem was with Cuyahoga Falls is they had broken ground. If we don't have a Plan Commission, they can't approve their project, they can't break ground.
Correct.
So why the rush?
Thank you.
Can I make a statement really quick?
Take your time.
Ma'am, I have a rebuttal to one of your questions.
Sure.
Mayor, is it okay if I take your time?
Absolutely.
I intended to speak about this during board comment, but I prepared a few statements here specifically about the commissions. So to answer your question a little bit further, which the mayor already has done so. But recently, there's been some misunderstanding on what village commissions are and who sits on them. Allow me to state some facts about the village of Tinley Park's commissions. One, the village commissions are volunteer-based. Two, they are appointed by the mayor of Tinley Park. Three, anyone can submit a letter of interest and a basic resume. Four, commissions are a recommending body. With that all being said, I'd like to take a moment and speak about what has taken place over the course of the last few weeks. The mayor and the board have received several commissioners and members' resignations. Let me be clear, at no point did I or any of my colleagues ask for their resignations. Although I might not agree with their political appointments, I can attest that their dedication and countless hours are extraordinary acts of volunteerism, and that they have exhausted every effort to make Tinley Park a better place. These men and women who have lived in Tinley Park for decades, some even have businesses in the village, they have vested interests just as much as we all do. For anyone to state otherwise would be an injustice to their service to this community. So here we are. There has been a groundswell of concern over these open seats, as you have stated. Now is your time to stand up, step forward, submit your letter of interest. And just to be clear, there are many hours and many tough decisions that these volunteer positions make. I look forward to moving forward with commissions, particularly planning and zoning. And with your help, I look forward to continuing to make Tinley Park the place that this community deserves. Thank you. I hope that addresses some of your questions.
It does, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Leslie Vasek again. You wanted question, information about what makes Tinley Park so great. I think it's a statement right here, the people of Tinley Park are our greatest asset, first of all.
I agree.
Second of all, I think our school district is second to none. I was lucky enough to have all three of my kids go through the public and high school and onto college because of our, because of our school district. My question is, on our second board meeting, I believe it was February 4th, I might have my date wrong, you appointed three people to work with regarding the Buckeye Corporation to work with, three people from the audience?
Four.
Four, sorry?
Four. And it was to review the codes and the process.
Okay, what happened with that? Is there, has there been any progress on that?
Yes, I'm actually trying to schedule a meeting now for the middle of March. I think the management was going to reach out to those members. There has been some consideration to possibly appoint three other members to try to make it a fuller, more full board, make it seven, so there's some conversation that could be bounced around as opposed to just an even number of four. I know that that information should be going out to those members within probably the next week or so. So I do plan on having that relatively quick.
Okay, anything that comes out of that meeting, is it going to be where we are going to know about what happened?
Well, certainly. I would expect that to happen because several of the members are actually administrators of the Facebook page.
I know.
So, yeah, I'm expecting, and to be very blunt with you, I mean, I would expect that 100% transparency there.
Just checking.
Yeah, absolutely.
One more comment. I just want you to know, and something that I've been taught by my mother since I was very little, whatever's done in darkness will come out in the light.
Absolutely.
My name, eh, I can't even talk right now. My name is Rebecca Cozile, I'm a student at Central Middle School right now, I'm in eighth grade, and of eh, can't even talk. Everybody says that kids don't know much about this kind of stuff, but one thing I do know is that I really don't think this Buckeye project isn't a good thing for this Tinley Park, because, one, it would lower, I can't even remember what I wrote. It could potentially lower home values nearby. Also, while doing some research, I found that studies show that crime rates can increase in a property with this many units. With this complex directly across the street from our school, as students, we could be affected if a major crime could happen. We would go on lockdown, and when that would happen, we aren't learning anything. Also, personally, my bus takes 183rd on Oak Park Avenue, and there's a lot of traffic congestion as it is. But if, and when these apartments are built, it will create way more congestion, possibly making us for school. Me and my classmates are a future of Tinley Park who's watching out for us.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Fitzgerald. I'm obviously a citizen of Tinley Park. I received some information while I was sitting there, and I thought everybody in the room should hear it. It's, some of the FOIA documents came in, and they were rapidly texted to me. Just to kind of reiterate the state that we're in with this type of, and who we're dealing with. Dated 9/26/2015, 11:21 a.m., David Petroni to Amy Connolly. Good day, I hope all is well. I was just following up to see how the code cleanup was doing. Thanks, regards, Dave Petroni. 9/26/2015, 1:21 p.m., Amy Connolly to David Petroni. Text amendments will be approved, 10/06. No controversy so far. Sounds like she knew there would be some controversy, correct, guys? 9/26/2015, 3:07 p.m., David Petroni to Amy Connolly. Awesome. Next week or the week after are our announcements. Jump forward a month to 10/27/2015, Amy Connolly to David Petroni. Text amendments passed last night, roundabout was voted down.